Yeah, here. All right, we go now to the superintendent's report. Steve?
Thank you, Madam President. Comment I'd make, obviously, the report card was released this week. Just make a general comment that I think considering what schools have been through the past two years, I think it's going to take some time to kind of like dive into this data a little deeper, thoroughly analyze it, see what it's telling us. At that point, determine how to best move forward with that. It's going to be a top priority for our building and our district level leadership teams. We've already started to discuss it in the next coming weeks. So I want to assure the board and the community that that's something that is imperative for us moving forward. That's all.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Report. Olivia?
Good evening, President McKay and the rest of the board members. I just thought, as I've been delving into learning about Marion City Schools, I thought it would be a good time to just give an enrollment update to you and to the public. So I've just put together a few slides. We certainly can share these with you, but we have our enrollment by school. So if you wanted to see our, obviously, our smallest school is Hays with 226 students. And obviously Harding is our largest right now with 1,182 students. The next data point that we pulled is by grade. And you can see here preschool up to grade 12. Right now, our highest number of enrollment is in sixth grade with 357 students. The rest of them, you can see there are just trickled in. And then what I also did was a breakdown by demographic of student group, just looking at last year to this year. We really don't have any major changes when we break down by student group. You'll have gender there, race, our students with disabilities. You can see everything is pretty much aligned with what it was last year. There is a slight difference there as students identified as gifted, and that's probably because we've pulled that number at the beginning of the school year, so that number will probably increase for our students identified as gifted. So we will continue to monitor that number to see if there's any difference. And I also want to note the homeless students that are there. It is a 1.8 right now, but again, consider we're pulling it at the beginning of the school year. And in my conversation with staff that have been here, that number will typically go up through the year as well. I also took an opportunity to look at some enrollment trends across the past 10 years. So on this chart, the blue line represents 10 years ago what our demographic was in Marion City Schools. The red line indicates five years ago, and then our green is what our current enrollment is. So on this chart, we've got by gender and by race. There really hasn't been much difference by gender. With our Hispanic population over the past 10 years, we've gone up from 5.1% to a 9%. Also to note, our multiracial population was at a 7% 10 years ago, and we're now looking at 11.8%. So that student group is increasing. And then our students that are identified white, non-Hispanic, in 10 years ago was at 81.2% and is now at 72.3%. So outside of those three demographic racial groups, we haven't really seen much change over the past 10 years here in Marion. The next slide that I pulled to look at were also other student groups. We're looking at our students with disabilities and without disabilities. Again, that number has not changed much over the past 10 years. It's been sitting at around 18%. And then we look at our English learners and those students not identified as English learners. Again, not really much change there. And then I also have pulled our students identified as gifted. So again, as Steve said, we will, you know, continue to take different data points and start putting them together. Obviously, the state report card is going to be a good starting point for us. Obviously, it's just one piece of data that we'll use, but we really are committing to looking at the data that we have available to us this year and really trying to develop our, all of our steps that we're implementing throughout the year based on some of this data. So for me, this was interesting. I know that a lot of communities wonder, you know, how has our demographic changed? There are some districts that have seen big, major changes, but I thought it was interesting to show that here in Marion, our overall enrollment has pretty much stayed stagnant over those 10 years. I will note, it's not in the chart, but we currently have 320 students that are open enrolled here in our district, so living in another city but choosing to come to school here in Marion. So again, this is just a tidbit of information. I will be trying to incorporate some of these data points into my report, so if there are data points that the board is interested in or would like, you know, further information regarding the programs that we're offering in Marion, if you would like to communicate those to myself or Steve, we certainly can try to weave that in so that you are informed with any of the information that you would like to have. And that concludes my report.
When you, real quick, when you say 320 live in another city, you mean they're open enrolled from another district, not necessarily another city?
Yes, they're assigned to another-
Like from Pleasant or River Valley? Yes, okay.
Yeah, or some of our teachers, renter students here, yeah, that sort of-
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to the Treasurers' Report. Veronica? I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve amendments. Do I have a second? All right, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. And financial approvals. Motion to approve the following financial items. A, the August financial reports as presented, fund balances, checks, and financial report. The fiscal year '23 permanent appropriations, Exhibit A, revised revenues, Exhibit B. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Do you want me to, I'll just touch on a couple things since it's our appropriations for the year. In general, pretty much our budget will stay the same for next year, but there are a couple areas that the appropriations went up and down. And I think the most important thing, we ended last year at appropriations of 80 million. This is requesting 88 million. And the increase came mostly in CARES Act funds. We have to spend CARES Act 2 by the end of this fiscal year. And then the ARP-ESR funds, which would be CARES Act 3, need to be all spent by the end of fiscal year '24. So we didn't spend a whole lot of CARES Act 3 in fiscal year '22 because we were trying to spend CARES Act 2. So what I did was just split CARES Act 3 in half, put half of it in this fiscal year and half of it next, at least for this appropriation right now. And then we also had a decrease in student wellness and success. We had a separate account for that from funding that we received over the previous two fiscal years. That money is all spent, and that was about a million dollars decrease in that fund. And then our permanent improvement fund went up about a million because some of the projects that needed to get done over the summer are going to actually push back to get paid for this year. So that kind of all balanced each other out to get it. Oh, I also wanted to add, we did receive a couple extra federal grants this year, one of them being a Title I School Improvement Grant, and it was an entitlement grant. It focuses on Harding, Taft, and Harrison. And each one of those buildings, Harding got a full-time literacy tutor out of that, Harding and Taft each got, they got, also got a full-time literacy tutor, but half of that salary is coming out of that grant to improve literacy scores. And that was an additional $112, let me get the right line, $140,000 to increase appropriations this year. And then, you know, we have all the rest of the federal programs, and we have a few to finish out this year, one being the IWP grant. That was to create a couple CTE programs in the high school, and then also the microfarm grant, the equity for each. So, so that's kind of why our appropriations right now, I'm asking for a little bit more. The majority of it is because of the CARES Act, so.
And if we don't spend the CARES Act money within the time parameters, the federal government has said, what happens to them?
We have to, we don't, we just don't have it available to spend.
It goes back, so to speak?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Anytime we don't spend a federal fund, the money goes back to the federal government. And this year, with COVID, we had a 21st Century Grant, just to tell you how it works. We had a 21st Century Grant that they allowed us to carry money over from fiscal year '21 to '22. It was a pretty significant amount of money. We ended up not being able to spend every dime of it because it also has some pretty stringent structures around it, so you couldn't just spend it on anything. So there were some funds in that grant that we just weren't able to access or use. Wasn't significant, but rarely does it happen, but that was one that it happened in.
If you had a crystal ball, do you think we would use all the CARES Act money before the timeframe?
Yes.
Okay.
We have ideas.
Yeah. The one thing about the CARES Act, at the end of the day, it is one of the very few federal grants that you can supplant money from the general fund. At the end of the day, if you got down to fiscal year '24 and you had $500,000 left in that, and you couldn't spend it, whatever, you were going to do a project and it didn't come through in the end, you could supplant some money from the general fund into that in order to be able to spend that down. I can guarantee you that will all be spent.
In other words, you could, when you say supplant, pay salaries out of that money that would normally come out of capital-
Correct.
Or out of general fund?
Out of the general fund.
And then saves the general fund that amount of money?
Right. It kind of gives you a little bit healthier balance in your general fund, at least to help offset, you know, the next year when you have to put some of that money back in.
And you're already doing that a little bit, aren't you?
A little bit.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Could you also talk about the two grants in this, talking about the PA and the water?
Okay, so we also received two grants, and I didn't, I should have included them on increased revenues here. We were awarded a safety grant. We had applied for that last fall. We were actually rejected, and then they went back through what they had done and decided to award us. That was $96,000. That is going to be used to put new PA systems in every building. They're outdated, and in terms of safety, it was one of the highest priorities for the office to be able to talk to each classroom. So I think, I think right before this meeting, I just got an email and the final quote on that. So we'll be moving forward with that. And then we also wrote this funky little grant to get water refilling stations in different buildings, and we rewarded that, and that was about $10,000. So those are going to go into, so we had some pretty good news on those two levels. And in terms of that safety grant, we are applying for the next round, and we can, we're eligible to apply for, eligible to apply for quite a bit. I don't know how much the federal or the state government will end up giving, you know, distributing, but we've had conversations. That's due by October 1st. So the SRO has kind of taken the lead on that with our technology department, and I think some of their focus is to make sure we have video cameras at all the appropriate places, to make sure we have, you know, all of the locks are working. I can't remember what else they had discussed.
We talked about keypads possibly for law enforcement who might not have a badge in a crisis situation or something like that, and a couple other security upgrades with doors and things like that that just need to upgrade it and update it, so.
Yep.
Any other questions?
That money goes quick when it's security and safety.
It is. It seems like, $96,000 seems like a lot, but when you divide it by five buildings or six buildings, goes pretty fast.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, we have a motion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right. We're now at the hearing of the public. The Board recognizes the value to school governments of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the Board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The Board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. I believe we have one person who has signed in, and that is Kevin Hall. He would come to the microphone, please.
My name's Kevin Hall. I'm a resident of the city of Marion. I came back tonight, I was here last month, and I was hoping to convey to the Board as a whole, I thought things were moving in a positive direction, and hoping that we could instill in the community as a whole that we are bettering ourselves as a school district, and I believe we are. However, I think if I had been permitted to make my comments at the end of that meeting, I would have had some other things to say. I was quite disturbed, quite frankly. I was appalled at what I witnessed later in the meeting. And it comes down simply to how we treat each other. I've had an opportunity to meet Mr. Mazzi, and he's come here, he's well credentialed. He's also a person who has, has a very high reputation. I've checked him out. He has a very high reputation with the people he's dealt with over the period of time. And he's here to help, and we should welcome him here. Likewise, I saw three staff members put on a detailed, in-depth proposal and also put together the programming that they're working on, and contractually also with mandated requirements, to provide for the needs of our kids, provide for the counseling they need, and also to deal with discipline. And I found that there's so many things working in the right direction when they were putting this information out. But my concern, quite frankly, and it's not targeting people individually, but quite frankly, I was quite disturbed when Mr. Ratliff came forward and basically, I thought unfairly, tried to present his thoughts, almost cherry picking things out of contracts when people didn't have them in front of them, and also trying to present an idea that I interpreted as grossly unfair. He basically came forward and said things were being done in secret, in almost a nefarious manner. And I found that quite disturbing, particularly when it was premised on no fact, and I thought it was unfair. And to watch papers be shaken at the superintendent and be called this guy, this is the disrespect. This is what we had an hour probably at that last meeting about discipline and what we're trying to do. And it's almost as though we're licensing this type of disrespect within the Board and telling staff and telling students and telling people in the community as a whole that this kind of behavior is okay. You're a school board, for crying out loud. What you need to do is work together, and you can have your spirited debate, you can have disagreements, but what I witnessed, I found appalling. And then we can all do better. And that's all I'm simply saying. That's what I tried to say last month, but I felt that this needed to be spoken again, and I felt it had to go challenged. I think we all can do better, and quite frankly, doing better is when you owe an apology to someone. And I feel the staff and the superintendent owed an apology on how they were treated that last meeting, because that's what I would have said had I been able to speak at the end of the meeting last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it.
All right. We are going now to agenda confirmation. Do we have any additions or deletions? If not, we'll go to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
My second.
Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right. Under New Business, Agreement and Contracts, Item A, Voting for All the Following Agreements and Contracts as One. This would be, Item B is Guide Stones Behavioral Health Services. C, Shane Co. Choreography. D, the MOU for the YMCA After-School Create Grant. E, MOU YMCA for the After-School Create Grant for Hays. High Road of Bucyrus Special Education Services. Do I have a motion?
So move. I want to talk about each one of these contracts, so.
Do I have a second?
I don't know how you can have a, any kind of vote to vote on them as a whole and not talk about them.
My second.
Okay.
I think as a matter of law, you have to talk about them.
I don't think it is, but. We'll go to Item A.
You want me to talk about Item A?
You want to talk about it.
As Mr. Hall had pointed out, you know, we had a disagreement with Mr. Mazzi. He thought he doesn't have to answer a board member's question. That's what ensued last time. It's in the meeting minutes. Anybody listening or anybody out there wants to read it, they can. So I'm not going to address Mr. Mazzi tonight because apparently you're supposed to go talk to him before a board meeting and not do your bidding in front of the public like that's the whole purpose of having a public board meeting. But since my colleagues have all read and understand these contracts, I'm going to throw out what I disagree with, and I'm sure since they know what's going on because they would have met with him before, and they're here to vote tonight because these are finalized contracts, they will know the answers to these very important questions. For instance, I don't know what this contract's for and how this contract is different than the last contract we just put it on, because it calls for counseling services, which we just gave the students. Also, I don't know what building this is for because the last contract had what buildings they were for. This is just a general that anybody can do. This contract, fortunately for us, tells us what to do if a person's Medicaid billed or privately billed, which the last one did not. And nobody in this district can tell me what those appropriations were going to be, if we had to pay for it, how many kids were enrolled, how much we have to do in the future. So hopefully, someone did a cost analysis of how this district's going to operate within this contract. And most importantly, surely everybody read that the provider is allowed to talk to our 14, 15, 16, and 17-year-olds without parental permission, without us having to talk to parents about their kids are in counseling for six sessions or 30 days, whichever. And I am in total disagreement with counselors coming into our district, our teenagers approaching them, and parents are not being notified of counseling services, professional services that have been sought out by their teenager. Quite frankly, to use Mr. Hall's language, I'm appalled that this would be in front of us, allowing our teenagers and having us not talk to the parents at all to say your son or daughter has sought out counseling. Now, obviously, we have this on the table. I am a adamant no, because I don't think any teenager should be seeking out counseling around their parent and their parent not knowing what's going on and the fact that they're needing professional counseling. These are not the same counselors that we employ in our district. So if they want to talk to our school counseling staff, that's our people. If they're seeking outside school behavioral health consultation and prevention programs, their parents need to be notified. And anybody voting on this tonight as a yes, shame on you, because we ask our parents to come and participate, but when it comes to their mental health and seeking out counseling, we don't even inform them. This is a district that consistently asks parents to do stuff, but only so far because we got it from here. And it's just not right.
And you didn't reach out to Steve?
Who am I to reach out for? This is for, this is, I think, Madam President, you forget that when it comes here-
Excuse me.
I'm not going to excuse you. When it comes here, this is a final contract they're asking us to approve. This isn't like a draft.
Right.
So if you don't know what's in it, and you guys have no answers for me, maybe you shouldn't vote for it either, because we're not, I'm saying, this as written should not be. And if you guys think otherwise, then you'll vote yes like you always do. I'm shocked that in month nine, that you guys haven't voted or found one contract you don't like, you haven't found one services we don't need, you haven't found one employee you want to vote against. I'm shocked that all these contracts we pass is just a yes. It's an emphatic yes, all the time.
The reason you may be shocked is because you're not doing your homework before we go into our meetings.
I think I'm the only one doing it, to be honest with you.
May I speak, please, to this, Madam President?
Yes, please.
I have done my homework, read the contract very carefully, spoken to administrative staff members, including Mrs. Reinhardt. And I'll just tell you the reason these contracts are the way they are, and the last one was the same way. This, these folks provide Medicare, or excuse me, Medicaid services to those who are qualified for Medicaid. On occasion, and it has happened in our district, that we have a seriously, a seriously mental health, a serious mental health problem with a child, and it came out of this a few years ago. We had a child that was highly super suicidal. The parents, they were not Medicaid qualified. Parents could not afford the treatment. So the staff member said, I will pay for this child myself. I'm not going to let, I'm not going to lose this child on my watch. So ever since then, we have had these contracts that are there in place to fall back on if there is an absolute need for an emergency situation. And the contract in this case has specific, and the last one did two, dollar amounts as to what they would charge us. And so that puts a cap on what they're going to charge us. If you ask for help in an emergency out there in the public, their fees might be much higher than this. And so it's to protect children from a situation where there's no Medicaid and where there is absolutely, the parents cannot afford it. We're not going to lose that child on our watch. Number two, this contract is not new. It's one that is a renewal of a previous contract. I'm not sure how many years we've had this group, but we've not spent a dollar of the money helping any of the child, have not needed to help them. But it is a failsafe for children who cannot afford these services. And as you read in the agenda, the funds for this would come out of the CARES Act, if necessary, to pay for those services. It would not come out of the general fund. And Mrs. Reinhardt assured me when I did my homework that we have the funds to pay for children in need of these emergency services. Now, I can't speak directly because I did not ask many questions about the 14 to 17-year-old, but my memory is that children of that age may make their own decisions, and I'm quite sure that our staff is, and it may involve abuse by a parent. It would be one of those situations where I think our staff is well qualified to make the decision about whether a child's parents need to be brought in early in the situation. And I'm sure they're brought in throughout that circumstance if the circumstance warrants. And maybe Steve or someone else can speak to the age limit at which children are, can make their own decisions about seeking mental health with a guidance counselor or mental health treatment or advice from somebody else. So that's, I think we, the importance here is we're saving kids' lives, and we're not, when they cannot afford the service, we are not going to lose a child on our watch.
I appreciate everything you said, but whatever question or what you said is not the contract that I got.
It's the contract I read.
There's nothing in here that talks about only emergency services, just like last time. And there's nothing in here that talks about we treat Medicaid versus private health. They have, in this contract, it talks about if Medicaid's billed, they'll build Medicaid. If it's private health, they'll seek out private health. There is no benefit to having Medicaid or private health. It's who they bill. This talks- This talks about they're going to do a diagnostic evaluation, psychological testing, counseling, psychotherapy, psychotherapy for crisis. It, that, none of this says in an emergency health situation, none of it.
It is. Well, because in Medicaid, they're going to have their coverage. And as the contract provides, most private care insurance companies will not pay for a child if it's, the services are through the school. That's not to stop that parent under their own private contract from seeking services under their own private insurance carrier. So we got two different circumstances going on here, one in the school system and one in private care. This is strictly for Medicaid and it says that. They'll bill Medicaid whenever possible. And we've structured these contracts only in the emergency where there is no other service and no other funds available to take care of that child.
It talks about if they're not Medicaid eligible, who to bill and how they're going to bill it. So to say that it's only for Medicaid students is totally inaccurate. I don't know why you guys keep trying to have this line that goes out to the public. I mean, unless you guys aren't reading this or don't understand it, maybe we should have our attorney at every meeting because you guys obviously aren't reading through these contracts. That's not what it says.
I take offense to that because I'm pretty good.
I mean, you can, I understand, but I mean, it must be that you're bad at misrepresenting to the public what it says then because this is not correct. I mean, what you are saying is, is totally incorrect because it goes through a whole line if you're private pay on how they get their money. So to say that it's just Medicaid is, is not accurate at all. And as far as when you're telling the people that if our staff and, and this person could commit certain things as in suicide or they're being abused, those are mandatory reporters throughout this building that has to call Children's Services. The protections will be in place. So to say that we need this counseling service because of abuse or suicide or something is totally inaccurate. Because they will get it through Children's Services that will come out and investigate the kid and then put it into counseling. So that's not the only reason you would use a counseling service like this. And to say otherwise is inaccurate. It doesn't even say that in here.
It says, "Provider will seek Medicaid reimbursement for all diagnostically appropriate Medicaid-eligible services provided to students enrolled in Medicaid. Private insurance plans typically do not provide payment for services provided in the school setting. As a result, school may purchase the above services for a student who is uninsured or underinsured." The school principal, well, that's where it ends as far as who they're going to bill. So I don't know.
So it's more than Medicaid as you just read. And then over here, it talks about provider may also provide consultation prevention service to referred students, teachers, and/or classrooms. So our adult teachers could be using this service.
If they're Medicaid.
No, that's not what it says, Ted. Anywhere in here, it talks about how they bill. And then we're going to help them go find the billing source if they're not Medicaid. I don't know what program.
I'm sure you and I went to law school at the same time and you got to read a contract from all four corners. That's your contract reading number one.
Then could you explain to us why they would even have a billing chart for Medicaid and non-Medicaid people?
Can you give us one minute? Thank you. Kathy's going to approach.
Mr. Ratliff, I hope I can answer your questions.
I hope so too because last time you stood there and you sat down.
Please don't.
You don't have to be insulting to her.
Well, I mean, they don't need to.
You're being totally insulting to her.
I'm not being insulting. Last time she stood up, she didn't want to answer questions when it got too hot.
She, she stood there and answered every question.
She did not.
Oh, yes, she did.
So if we could focus on the questions now, I believe we can get back to that so we can get this moving. So the first question I heard you ask was about the ages 14 and up with the six sessions. So that is something that is allowed by law with mental health agencies. That is something that we would use within Marion City, only with permission first for, they would not use that service without checking with us. But we do have incidents where parents are not reachable. They may be incarcerated. We have McKinney-Vento students who are homeless and not living with their parents and we cannot reach them and there are mental health needs. That is limited to those six sessions and they cannot go beyond that.
Nowhere in there, again, does it say with our permission. I hope you can understand that once a student reaches out to a counselor, there is a counselor-patient relationship that we won't be able to breach. So to say that it's only an emergency and none of them are going to come to us is totally a lie. There's no other way to say it, but it's an extreme absolute falsehood.
But it does say, "The principal of the school or his designee will identify student in need of services, notify the student's parent or guardian."
That's in addition to them.
But I'm saying, you're, you're saying there's no.
No, a principal can, a principal can identify a student that needs services. And if that kid is not Medicaid, we will be on the hook for that two, in two seconds. And, and then in addition, a 14 to 17-year-old, an 18-year-old would be considered an adult by law, but 14 to 17 can reach out to this agency and get their own services and the parent is never contacted, ever.
Okay.
Would not be able to, so there is a referral process. So agencies would not reach out to, or students would not be able to reach out to the counselor. That would have to go through one of our school personnel as part of our referral process, which is not in that document, but it is the process we have.
Thank you.
So I mean, this is the contract. If it's not in here, like Ted said, it's not in here, so they don't have to do it. This person could get Guide Stones number, meaning one of our students, call them and they're getting services because we have contracted to allow it to happen.
Only through the referral though, right? Only through, they got to go through us.
So all of the referrals then are started at the building, but then all of those referrals go through me.
In addition, that they don't have to go through you according to this contract.
Yeah, can I just give a point of clarification? That, the law that they're referring to is Ohio Revised Code, section 5.1, 22.04, and it does state exactly the language that's in there that a minor can request.
But we would have to approve them to do that.
Ms. Butler's saying our process would be because of best practice, we would contact parents when we can. But technically, we don't have to based on the law.
According to this, it won't be done. And according to this, I'm against it. The only way they can do that is if you allow these agencies in here to have access to your kids to then be able to do that. I'm against it is what I'm saying.
All right.
Okay, two questions.
Sure.
In terms of your first statement, the situations under which, when you mentioned that if a parent is gone or if a parent is unreached, can that be more, this is kind of what I asked last month too. Is this something that can be explicitly stated? And I guess I've got a question in terms of the Ohio Revised Code as well. To me, I'd sign on for that because it's, again, I know you can't list every single situation that could arise. But in terms of, and this is where you get into political arguments nationwide right now in terms of the inability of parents, and I'm not just talking academically, but especially when it gets into social emotional learning. The, the role of the parents, not just being excluded, but perhaps like literally just being shoved out. We're going to take care of your kids socially, emotionally, and everything else, mental health-wise. And if they want to talk to us and not you, so be it. And I would like for us as the school district to do everything that we could, A, to provide the services our students need, but to B, avoid putting ourselves in a position to be accused of doing such. With, that's why I said, what you said at first, I was like, okay, parent isn't there, parent can't be reached, boom. But I guess I got confused when it said, the provider, excuse me, in such cases, the minors' parent or guardian will not be informed of the services, just lost my spot, without the minors' consent unless provider determines that there is compelling need for disclosure based on a substantial probability of harm to the minor or to other persons. I think that goes back to what Ted said in terms of, you know, if this student is thinking about harming him or herself or committing suicide, then, you know, the, the parents need to be notified immediately. So again, the first question, can we explicitly state in the contract what you said at first? And secondly, are there, what would be some circumstances under which these students would be able to talk to these counselors and the parents aren't notified if the harm is already part of this?
So any of the situations, first of all, I will say that this is written in there. It is something that as a parent, I have a discomfort level with as well. However, as a professional in social work, I would say it's a necessity because of those situations where we have that. As a school district, every effort is made to reach our parents anytime we do mental health referrals. Prior to making a mental health referral to any of these agencies except in an emergency situation, the school is required to get parent permission first before we even make that referral. I can tell you that I have kicked back three referrals this month because parent permission had not been gotten or it had been gotten, like grandparent gave permission, but when I look it up, grandparent doesn't have custody. So I have sent those referrals back to the school, have not forwarded on that information to the mental health agency until they make contact with the parent and then get that permission before we move that referral forward.
But that's on a referral, correct?
Correct.
If a 14-year-old simply wants to have five counseling sessions with an outside.
They would need to go through the referral, the referral part. None of the outside agencies meet with our students without that referral process.
So parental notification would take place regardless then?
Correct, except for if we have a suicidal child and we can't reach the parents and they need to see someone that day. And I understand that all of that language is not in the contract. But those are the situations that we, how we are practicing within Marion City. I can also tell you, as far as my social work ethics that I have to follow, these are things that I have to follow, to follow my ethics board.
I think the answer to me is that the contract can't cover guidelines and policies and processes that we trust our people to do. And, and Mrs. Butler is a professional, as well as all of her staff. And, and these folks we're hiring under these contracts are, are professionals and I, I trust their judgment to do the things that you were just raising, Mr. Weidling. And so for that reason, again, I go back to this as a protection for children and their families.
But why can't we put it in there, Ted?
Well, I think that's micromanaging a process. The guidelines are there. We know they're there. We trust our people.
Or it's just then, it, it's not that. It's a poorly written contract that we're going to approve and just trust people.
You know, something that is not anticipated may come up. And then what we do, go back and add that.
No, you would have an emergency section of a contract. It's just not in here. This is a very poorly worded contract. And I guarantee we didn't do it. They gave it to us and we're signing it.
What I would say is that is very difficult to define per child what an emergency situation would be.
Especially when we don't try.
And every situation for every student would be different. And even to the levels of the child's ability to be resilient. One child, it may be an emergency and another child may have a similar situation that we would not consider an emergency because of the level of resiliency or grit within that child. So that is one of the reasons why it would be very difficult to specify and define what is an emergency situation in those contracts.
We didn't try to do it. I mean, it's very difficult when you don't even try. I agree with that. It's not unfair, Mr. Mazzy. It wasn't done. It hasn't been done in the past and it's not done today.
It's not fair because what we've alluded to is that we're not willing to put a price tag on a life of a child in crisis. And it appears you are. So what I would say to the board is, as, at these points where it's because of internal processes and procedures that are longstanding in this district and have worked over time, including this contract and including the contract at the last board meeting and without any hiccups. And this district does a marvelous job in identifying those students and getting them help they need. We can't tell a child, oh, no, you know, don't do that. Don't jump off the roof. We got 30 days for our next board meeting, then we'll go ahead and prove this amount of money. This is not fair and it's not realistic in life with no help, the way mental health is right now. And you should know better than most, Mr. Ratliff, that those people need help now.
I do know better than most. That's why this is a poorly written contract that we shouldn't be approving.
Through your eyes as an attorney.
It's, any attorney would tell you this is poorly written.
No, because we have another attorney who said it's not.
Your own worker, our own lady that's the professional here in this district is saying that the procedures are not even in the contract.
Because they are written procedures within the district.
They have to go through her and her ethics.
They do not. This, this company here that we're, we're with does not, Ohio Guide Stone does not have to.
Are there additional questions for me?
We have a motion.
So I do.
Yes.
So with the addition of Guide Stone, then how many different mental health service vendors do we have within our district?
Currently, outside agencies is just the two. We have one MOU that we are actually going to hold off on a little bit and another MOU that hopefully will be able to be presented at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right. So are we, I'm sorry.
Again, I see both parts of the argument, the need for it, but again, the contractual part of it is. And I know you don't, there's a reason why there's only 10 amendments to the original Bill of Rights or else they keep going forever and ever and ever. I just feel strongly, I think it opens the door to, again, and that's the political nature of this country right now, with young students being, I mean, they can't get a tattoo. They can't go buy a pack of cigarettes. They can't go buy beer. They can't, but they can discuss so many things that will affect them forever without parental input. And that, it, it does bother me as a parent, as a former educator, as a sitting board member, that I would move that we do make a small change. And I, Ms. Dyer, I understand your argument that, well, do we have 1,000 amendments to this and I don't want that. But I thought what Ms. Butler said at the beginning was just so spot on and accurate. If the parent can't be contacted, and that might sound like nitpicking, but it shows that we are trying to, and I know we're already doing it. I'm not denying that Marion City Schools is, well, we just throw the parents out the window. We don't care. I'm not saying that at all. I just think, again, it was so well said. I wish that was in the contract. That's just where I, that's where I'm falling on this. I would move that we.
We need to trust them, you know, and also with 13 and 14 are what?
14 and above it was, yeah.
Yeah, so like if they are suspended from school, let's say, or there's some type of write-up, a student is asked to acknowledge that they, they got that write-up. And we don't call parents then. We have them sign it to acknowledge that they understand what, what went wrong. All right, now, we probably called them before or whatever, but a parent's not present at, let's say, grant when a student is asked to sign a paper acknowledging that they know what went wrong or why they're getting this punishment or whatever. I think kids are more savvy now and understand so much more than we give them credit for. And we have to depend on our professionals as well as, as a kid in discerning what is best for them.
Then we shouldn't have a contract at all. Should just let it, let them do whatever.
I ain't talking crazy.
We might have other.
Did you have other contracts you need to question?
Not, I mean, that was not on that, or B or whatever this was.
You said you had some on all of them.
Yes.
You want to move on to the next?
No, I, I thought she was going to call for the vote because it was.
We have to vote on them all together.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll go to the next one then. Under C, Shane Co., this, over here, I guess in my agenda, it talks about this and I, and I think over here it talks about, or maybe it was Mr. Mazzy had talked about this is for a contract really, or the funding source is the Harding Music Parents.
Correct.
For this amount of money, but I don't understand the services being provided over here. I get that he's going to provide choreographic.
Instruction.
Yes, instruction for our music students, but the contract doesn't have that anywhere. It talks about services and things the parties can agree on, which is not listed on here. I guess we're just assuming they're going to do the right thing. And also, are we funding any of this services or we put it all on the Harding Music Parents to fund?
This is all on the Harding Music Parents. Singers is not a curricular program, so it is funded outside of the district. It is only funded, we're like the agent, I guess. Is that right, Veronica? She, Veronica can speak to it much better.
I have, sorry.
Go ahead.
Madam President, Jamie and I had long conversations about this with Veronica, actually. So I know she can speak to.
Coming from one rehearsal to the next meeting.
So we're talking about services provided by Mr. Co.
What can I answer for you?
Well, is it just for what is over here, the recommended action to approve him for singer's choreography? Or is it, do you guys ask him to do more than just singer's choreography?
So context, Shane has been with us for 11 years. For 11 years, there were some ways that, I think within the last four years, the district asked that we have him submit a service contract in order to basically just have it be board-approved. The music parents pays the district. Any fees, district cuts the check. So it's more of a financial obligation. So it's more of a financial obligation. Shane consults, creates the show, comes in, creates the choreography for both show choirs, Extreme and Singers. Over eleven years, anything I have ever asked Shane to do, he does. So one of the things, if you would like more itemized items, it would go with creation of choreography. He comes in, blocks the kids, we use a playbook program that we share through apps. But basically, any movement on that stage during the show for either groups is Shane's creation, an organization of it.
And, and to your knowledge, is there a reason the board does not provide any of this funding? It's all just through the Harding Music Parents?
There is another supplemental. One of the reasons we moved to a service contract is because what used to happen is when Shane first began, he received the supplemental. One thing that is very common across the board is supplementals are, are low-paying jobs that people like me take because we love our kids. But Shane, being in the professional world of all of it, that was never enough to cover his amount. So the, what we would do, Shane would bill the boosters and then whatever the amount was, we would subtract what the school paid for the supplemental and the boosters would pay the difference. Four years ago, we were asked to not do that out of a compliance issue. Of course, I do not know why more money is not paid in that capacity. As somebody that fundraises a lot, of course, I would appreciate anything, anybody would ever love to contribute to pay for some of those items for our kids.
How many, how many kids?
This year, we have forty-five singer dancers, there are twelve instrumentalists, and then we will end with about eight stage crew that travels. So anywhere, it can range from sixty to seventy-five, eighty kids, depending on the year.
And how much, as a board, do we fund this program?
You pay me.
Yeah.
And the supplemental for choreography.
For a cleaner choreographer. We pay the instrumental combo director.
And I'm assuming transportation to-
Transportation, yes.
So is this like the only thing? I guess you would have uniforms, do you fundraise for that or?
Yes.
Okay, so uniforms and this is what we do not pay?
Yes.
This position here, yeah.
Cost and registration fees.
Okay, so you do get some, it's just-
It's in the form of paying for personnel such as myself in those supplementals. That is what the district pays for, plus transportation.
Transportation, okay.
So, you know, we have an extracurricular meeting in which Jamie has talked about all of this, especially with Shane Coe, Rocky, which you're part of the extracurricular subcommittee. And I think at the last subcommittee meeting, we kind of talked about his service and, and what he did. And I think he went in at length as to how invaluable he is to the district. I think the understanding, though, is kind of where it gets a little rocky, that the district doesn't pay him at the Harding Music. And I think you mentioned that at our extracurricular meeting, correct?
Yes, I mean, we have to, of course, thank a lot of the parents. I would hope, as directors ourselves, that do a lot of fundraising on our own for the kids and the parents of the kids. The bulk of the fees are paid by them. However, one of the things that is very unique to Marion City Schools, which is something I am very proud that I inherited, was the great legacy of our music department. Competition show choir is a very specific selective niche market, if you will. Takes a very specific skill set to do and do well. And so I was fortunate to inherit that from the Lucinda Halkiers and was asked to build it back up. And Shane has been a part of that since my second year at Harding, so yes. It does cost a lot and that's because he's not doing a community show choir, which has a different expectation. We are, we are noticed on, and ranked on showchoir.com, national things. It, it's a very specific skill that Shane gives to us.
And show choir, show choir gives back to the community at multiple events, right?
I hope so. We've certainly tried to represent our community and give back to them.
Yeah, you go out and participate in a lot of different community events, yeah.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the MOU for the YMCA for after-school create for Grant.
And when I read these, it was one for, I think it's one for Taft and McKinley, the other ones for Harrison, Garfield, and George Washington? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is anything, are we doing anything for Hayes or they just?
Yes.
Okay, what are we?
There's a third one down there, after-school, great grant for Hayes Elementary, will support childcare programming.
Is that in the MOU that I have or is it?
It's the E.
Ah, I got you.
Yep.
Yeah, I got you, I see that.
Thanks.
And then, under these, do we have any costs for us that we have to pay into this? I know a lot of it is grant-based. Do we have costs that we are, that we're to pay?
I don't believe so.
Looks like no fiscal impact for us.
Because I looked at some of this, it talked about cost of, the first one like one eighty and the other one like, I wanted to say one fifty, but that was what was submitted.
That's what they received.
Yeah. That's what they submitted.
Yeah.
We submitted, I mean, right?
They submitted it.
Meaning the YMCA submitted it to get the grant. But we don't have a fiscal cost to date or we don't think we're going to have one as to the YMCA programs.
Correct.
Okay, that's my question on that.
Okay, they're, they're, they're really good, just to go back to like the one that's all the elementarys for Hayes. It's really very similar to a 21st century grant.
Yep.
The, the nice thing about it, though, is the compliance on it isn't quite as stringent as the requirement on a 21st century. So they'll be able to be a little bit more flexible in some of the things that they do.
And do you know, do you know, because it, this is just obviously an agreement, but do, how we're, it's for a certain number of kids. Do you know if we're meeting that number or how we're getting the word out to meet the number or push the program?
So I know that we've struggled and I don't think anybody from that department's here. I know we've struggled a little bit trying to get kids involved since COVID. But I know that this year, they're going to, you know, really put a strong effort into getting the kids there.
Well, because I think it, it's very important for us to probably get the word out, but more so, if you look at, I don't know which one has it, but the schedule that was involved was very, I don't want to say regimented, but it is kind of regimented. It offers some educational before playtime, kind of tutoring after school, right?
Definitely, it's like a fun educational after-school program.
And it would also help out, the way I read it, help out those working parents that don't get off to like, say, five because it's till like six or something like that, right? And I think it was almost like every, after-school every day, right?
Yes, except for Fridays, I don't think they, you know, Fridays.
Okay.
You know?
So I think it'd be pretty important to have, if we could, the, at least the schedule-
Sure.
Somewhere that people can click on and maybe we can boost enrollment-
Sure.
Because it's pretty impressive what they're trying to do as far as the after-school.
I think that what we do provide is food.
Yes, that too. There's like a snack in there as well as, I thought what was impressive was the actual tutoring and then the activities.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, discussion on item F.
I think this was the same contract we had before, but I, I think Mr. Massey had answered that we have seven, I think roughly, students right now participating or something like that.
Yes, that's correct.
And this is in place in case we cannot provide the services, right?
Correct.
Meaning we try first and if it's beyond what we can accomplish, this is a more specialized for IEPs.
That's correct.
Okay, yep.
And just, I wanted to add too, after reaching out to Ms. Sheridan, that this is something we voted on and for previously, previously known as a Center for Autism and Dyslexia of Musiris. So that's what caught my attention, is this a new agency or not? Was informed that no, this is just a new name of a service that we've already, already provided.
So we have a motion?
So my understanding, I understand that we're voting on all of these at once still?
It's my understanding.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought, I thought we were pulling them out individually to speak.
I have no objection. It would be unfair to Mr. Ratliff perhaps to vote no on all of them when he might want to support some of them. If you want to do them individually, I have no objection.
All right, so I need a motion to-
Okay, so we have a motion on the table right now.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we'll put that motion.
I'll withdraw my motion to vote on all of them at once so that board members can vote their conscience on others.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'll, I'll move approval, if you're ready, Mrs. Reinhardt.
I mean, I'm the, the only one that I would vote no on is B, the rest I'm like, yes. So I don't know if you, if that changes, that you add C, D, and all them in one motion.
I just don't want you to have to vote no on Shane or others.
Yep, thanks, much appreciated.
So do you want to do?
Each of them.
Vote on C, D, E, and F?
Let's do that.
And then vote on B separately?
That'd be fine with me. I'll, I'll move to vote, approve C, D, and F.
I'll second that.
C, D, E, and F.
Okay.
All right.
And while we're doing this, I, sorry, go ahead.
So we have the motion?
I second it.
Okay. And we've discussed? Good? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Then we come to item B, Ohio Guidestone Behavioral Health Services.
Pardon me, I'll move approval on that one as well.
Okay, do you have a second?
Can I make a motion?
Need a second?
Yeah.
Okay, Tara. All right. And we've had our discussion. Call the roll, please.
But I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Before, before I vote, you know, I, I think it was, it was said early on in this meeting that we just vote for everything and like every contract, you know, we're just willy-nilly about our votes. And, you know, I resent that implication because when we, when I get this packet, when you give it to us on Wednesday, I scour through, I look, I make notes or whatever. And then when we get the final on Monday, I look at it again, like Mr. Wibling, he's got like red stuff all over his and I see probably Mr. Ratliff has killed a lot of trees with printing out some of these, this information as well. But I don't, the perception that we don't put any thought in what we're charged to do just is really offensive to me and you say it a lot about, I don't take this vote lightly. And just like you do your homework, you know, I also do mine. So, and I meet with the professionals, I talk with them. And I know that when I make a vote, I'm in my heart knowing I'm doing what's best for kids. So when you say things like that, it's offensive to me.
Yes.
I'm sorry it's offensive to you, but I don't know of one no that you voted for. And when you say you do it for kids-
All right.
We waste money like hand over fist at this place. And when you guys made a joke, when she's talking about CARES Act money and you guys, yeah, we'll spend it, of course. You send it, we'll spend it, there ain't no doubt about that, for sure.
Or it goes back.
For sure, we'll spend it.
And our kids in this district don't want for anything. We have great teachers, but anyways, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right.
Is it my vote?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. All right. So we have the consent calendar, do we need a motion to go into executive session? Or are we ready to vote on the consent calendar? I'll entertain a motion for executive session.
I just had a couple on the columns question, it's not really about, but when it says fifty percent, what's that mean?
They get half of it, splitting it with somebody else.
They're splitting a salary or something, okay.
A lot of times you'll see that on supplementals where two people will do one position, like maybe somebody can't commit to the whole thing.
So it's, we're getting for one contract, they're splitting it in half, whoever those, okay.
Yep, yep.
All right.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, please call the roll.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. I'm getting to the end of this. All right. We have our next board meeting, we have two in October. And they are listed here, October third is our state of the schools meeting. And October seventeenth is our regular board meeting. So there won't be any action items, I don't believe, on the state of the schools. All right, any committee reports? Tara, you said extracurricular, Matt?
No, I have student achievement.
Oh. Yes, okay.
My favorite.
Yes. Any other committees or we're just going to go right to Tara's student achievement?
I would like to, we have some amazing kids in our, in our district doing great things every single day. One is Jacob Beshler, he's a golfer. And Jacob is doing some amazing things. He set a few records in golf at Harding, first team, all MOC for two years in a row. He's the first golfer to make it to districts as an individual since 2017. He's tied records and not only that, he is a wonderful student athlete. So I'd like to shout out Jacob Beshler. We also have some students at Withrow who were recognized for National Technical Honor Society inductees. And those students, Alyssa Sherman, Skylar Dwyer, Jason Mullins, Dylan Gerald, Desmond Stage, and Cameron Tenny. Also, the faculty there is just amazing, Aaron Miller, Terry Blair, Sarah Winger, Mr. Wheeler, and Mr. Gilmore. Also, just today, Mr. Hartman and his band did an amazing job over the weekend. And they brought home six trophies, I really love that. First Class A overall, best music, best overall general effect, best overall percussions, best overall auxiliary, and grand champions of nine, count the nine bands. And most importantly, our superior rating qualified us for the thirty-fourth consecutive trip to the OMEA State Marching Band Finals. And I believe there, are they in Hilliard?
Yes.
They are in Hilliard, so-
I'm taking her with me.
So shout, shout out to those student achievers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara, appreciate that.
Could you also talk about, Tara, you had, I think you had put out something that maybe we should discuss, maybe now's not the right time, about getting some awards or something for people to hand out?
Well, we had talked about perhaps getting buttons or pins. So whenever someone is mentioned for their student achievement, we'll send a pin to their school like the next day. And oftentimes, we will invite them to board meetings if we have enough time. But I know all of us want to see our students achieve and it's nice to have something to kind of say that my name was mentioned at the board meeting. So we are all down for that, let's give them some pins.
Yep, great.
Unless anybody else has, of course, you're not going to say, I object.
No, I'm just, no, just board recognition, it's to-
Yeah, I love it.
I think their senior, their graduation party, you know, it's one of those things they put up there.
On their little display boards and everything.
Yeah, I put my kids' pins on their Christmas socks. All right. Okay, right now, we're going to turn to item fifteen and I'm going to introduce Debbie Campbell. She is from our search firm of K-12 consulting. And she's going to talk to everyone a little bit about the process. And then we're going to probably go into executive session, talk with her a little bit more. Welcome to- Welcome, Debbie.
Thank you for letting me speak, but the group tonight and for the community members that are here, because you guys are going to be a very important part of this process. So K-12 has a process that is a six-step process. Oh, good. Veronica is getting it on you.
I do, but.
So the first thing we try to do is identify the kind of candidate that you would like to have as your next superintendent. We have a variety of ways that we do that. We do that through networking, through professional organizations, through talking with community members to board members. So that's the first part of our process. The second part of our process is producing a superintendent search profile. Now, this profile will have components of having surveys. It will also have components that allow focus groups. The focus groups will include students, parents, administrators, teachers, support staff. And when we have met with all of those people, then we will write a profile on what the school district and the community says are the qualities that they're looking for in their next superintendent. Our next step would be go out and find someone that meets those qualifications and make sure that we are bringing you quality candidates that you will not have any surprises about. So we will do our homework on those candidates, we will vet those candidates, and be sure that we're bringing you quality candidates. The fourth process, part of the process, is that we will ident, the board will then identify the candidates that they would like to interview. K-12 will manage that interview process. And during that process, the board will invite thirty-five to forty people to meet the finalists that they would like to have as their next school superintendent. So they will identify folks who will meet these candidates and give them feedback. The board will have that feedback before they make their final decision. So it's really critical that they, that this board, when they interviewed search firms, that they wanted to be sure that the community was a big part of this process and that their voices were heard. And we want that same thing for your school district. Then we assist the board in contract negotiations, and we help the board, if they, if they so desire, do goals for this new superintendent. Now, I wanted folks to get to realize how long the process takes. So tonight, I'm here to organize the search. I have to apologize for my business partner. Her husband was taken by squad at four o'clock today to the emergency room. So she sends her regrets, but she will be here for the remainder of the search. So tonight, we'll organize the search, and then we, we're hopeful that on October 26th, we will hold those community focus groups. So we'll start with central office staff, administrators, classified certified staff, key stakeholders like your mayor, your chief of police, booster presidents, booster involvement. And then, in the evening, we will hold a community session for everyone to come. And what we will ask those groups is what are the really great things about Marion City School? I heard some from Mrs. Dyer. You have great students. So that is something that people who are looking for a superintendent job like to come to school districts where they have wonderful students. So that'll be a selling point, and I'm sure that you guys will be able to give us more selling points for your school district. Then the second thing we'll ask the community, the board, the, all those people you see up there, and I forgot students, we do interview students also, is we ask, what are the challenges facing your district? And every district is different. Sometimes districts have financial challenges. Sometimes they have challenges with curriculum, or they have challenges with keeping administrators. It doesn't matter what your challenges are, we need to make sure that we're bringing you a candidate that can handle those challenges. The next thing we'll ask that, those focus groups, is what are you looking for? What are the characteristics that are the most important to you? Is it someone who is very academic? Is it someone who's a good, has a good personality? What is it that you guys are looking for? So those things will then all be put into a thirteen-page report that will be posted on your school website, posted on our website, so that everybody sees exactly what was said during those focus groups. Then we post the position, and we need about two to three months to recruit candidates. We typically, our company is very heavy on recruiting the candidate that we think fits your profile, and therefore, it might take us a while to convince that candidate to apply for the job, because they're really happy where they are, and they're doing a great job where they are. But we think they'd be great here, and so we want to make sure that we give them time to come and visit the town, visit the schools, do things like that, so that we are making sure that you're getting the best candidates you can get. Then, middle of January and end of January, we will interview. And the board will do the first round interviews and the second round interviews, because it is the responsibility of the Board of Education to hire your next leader. So that is what they are charged with doing. But during that second round, we do this meet and greet, and that's where we have those thirty-five to forty people who will meet those finalists and say to the board, these are the characteristics we liked about these two finalists, these are the characteristics we think fit our school district. So you have, the board will have all that information before they make their final decision. Then, the transition begins, and that begins during the month of February through July. That gives the new person who's coming into your school district the opportunity to meet with board members, to meet with administrators, to meet with union representation, to meet with teachers and students, long before they take that job on August 1st of 2023. So that gives the community, just a little bit, and the board, a quick process of how things take place during this search. So we're going to start tonight, and we'll hope to be finished at the end of January. Any questions for us? I can't say us, because Kathy's not here.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. I now need a motion to go into executive session under item one, the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. And that's why we are going into executive session. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All right. Do we need a vote?
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteley?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right. I need a motion. No, we don't adjourn yet until we get back from, there is no planned other motions that we need to approve. No action is anticipated after we come out of executive session. So thank you all for coming. I appreciate the time you took out of your evening to be here and, you know, send us good vibes as we begin this search for our new superintendent. It's a big decision, so I appreciate everyone. Thank you for coming.